All right, well, it's six o'clock, so I'll call the meeting to order. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Everybody could rise and join me. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and I will call the roll. Ms. Dykett?
Yeah.
Mr. Petrowski?
Here.
Mrs. Hooper?
Here.
Mr. West?
Here.
And I'm also here. Welcome, everybody.
Yeah, Josh and Amelie too.
I'm sorry. Hi, Mr. Deandewaley. Can you officially say you're here?
Here.
And Ms. Groob?
Here.
Thank you. I didn't mean to forget you. Mr. Hodgkin, is there any adjustments to the agenda?
No, ma'am, none tonight.
All right, and I just want to say before we get started for the public, if anybody has any questions or comments, please put them in the chat and we will address them at the appropriate time. Thank you very much. And I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Winter School Committee meeting of January 6, 2021.
As moved. Sorry, so moved.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Then I'll call the vote. Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
Mr. Petrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooper?
Yeah.
Mr. West?
Yes.
I'm also a yes, so the vote passes unanimously. Reports. Mr. Hodgkin, superintendent report.
Well, I did submit my report to you, so I'm not going to go through all that. I do just, I only want to remind you all that we will be having our meeting next week. That will be in person. It will be here. And you need to make sure you mask. We are properly socially distanced. But that will be here, and it will begin at six o'clock. And I'll answer any questions you might have with the rest, but I do have a couple of things to add. I do want the, the school committee to know that we did have a couple of non-teacher adults that tested positive over the last couple of weeks. And we, they, I really don't want to say too much because it's a small group, and I don't want to give away any additional information. People responded outstandingly. The, the, the students who were involved, other adults who were potentially involved were informed and everybody just really handled it exceptionally well. We really appreciate that. And we still consider, I still consider us exceptionally lucky when I look, listen to what's going around us and, and the number of cases and such. We are, we are very blessed. I hope I don't jinx us by saying that publicly, but we have been very fortunate to have lost very little as a result of that. And I still maintain that our schools are the safest place for our students and our, our staff to be because of the, particularly the addition of the O2 Prime device that was added over the break. I also wanted to add that I did attend the, went to convocation with the Maine School Superintendent's Association last Thursday or Friday. Virtually, we did it virtually. And I found the sessions to be very affirming. In most cases, not a lot of what I would call new information, but it was really good to hear from my colleagues about different things that were going on. I particularly want to point out to this group that on the first day, sort of the keynote speaker was an epidemiologist who works down in the, on the coast. I found her to be very inspiring, at least in terms of where I'm, where I'm thinking of heading. She felt that even though we're in spiking right now, that we know so much more about what's going on, and that we're doing such a great job, and if people could just do two things, just do two things that we would really get a grip on the spread and start to turn the corner, and she, and those two things are, wear your mask, wash your hands. All the other things are really important, and there's no such thing as doing too much. But those two things are the most critical, and, and the more people wear their masks, wash their hands, you know, it'll be amazing. What she said that I really wanted to share with all of you, because I think it's so critically important. She was very positive about the, the ability for us to return to school 100% in person in the fall. Good about the vaccination program, and even if it doesn't get fully implemented for our school-aged children, if the adults are and the schools are prepared, and we continue to, we'll probably have to continue to mask. And Josh has a video? Josh, you have a video?
For my committee comment, sorry.
Okay, yeah, okay, sorry. And, uh, you know, that, that we'll probably still have to be masked in the fall. We'll probably still have to have some sort of precautions or like three feet and such. But, but really was very positive about moving in the direction that I've, I keep espousing, which is to get 100% of our students back in school 100% of the time, and you know, I think our staff have been working really hard to get back to that point as well. Um, and I'll answer any other question. Oh, wait a minute, I have the things here. Appointments. Tracy Wang was appointed to, we hired her for the food service position that was available at the grade school. We have a resignation from Ellie Stebbins, a second-grade teacher at the grade school. And Bethany Lyons, reading where the vacancy in the, in the food service workers, Bethany Lyons went from food service to ed tech three in the learning lab at the grade school, so have those positions reported as well. And I'm happy to answer any questions any of you might have.
I just wanted to make a note for people who might not have seen it, that in your report, you did mention that you're meeting with the town council on January 25th?
Yep.
So just for people to know if they wanted to attend. Do you know what time that starts, Mr. Hodgkin?
I believe it starts seven.
Seven, okay, thank you.
Is that a Zoom, I'm assuming?
It is.
Any other questions or discussion from anybody? None? Okay. So next would be the committee chair report. And I would like to start with just officially recognizing which school committee members are going to be on which committee. And so for the finance committee, that it will be Janet Dykett and Kelly Hooper. For policy, it will be Tim West and myself. And for negotiations, it will be Joe Petrowski and Kelly Hooper. So thank you, everybody, for sitting on those committees. Secondly, I attended the CATSI advisory meeting earlier today, and I thought I would just give you a little synopsis of what they went over in their meeting. First of all, Mr. Gannon will be sending out this year's cooperative agreement. We should have it in time for our February 3rd meeting to vote on. There is no change. It will be the same as last year's 2019, 2020. They're working on next year's calendar based on the assumption that next year will be a regular school year, and we should have that available to us by March. If I understood him correctly, enrollment in general has been down by about 75 students. He's assuming it is due to COVID. They're just starting recruitment process and signups for next year, and they'll have a better idea of what that's going to look like soon. They're going to be sending out mailings to 10th and 11th grade families. And they're beginning to put together some videos for recruitment. Didn't sound like they would be ready for anytime soon, but maybe for next year for recruitment purposes. Last year, they had a, what they called a boot camp, which basically was a time to experience some of the programs that they offer, and they had that last year during February and April vacation for ninth and 10th graders. There's no funding for that this year because the, those funds went to COVID needs. But they do have funding for boot camp for eighth graders that they're going to do this summer for two weeks. And they're trying to figure out something to do for the ninth and 10th graders. They voted on and approved the live work policy, which is basically a guidelines for their applied learning projects. If anybody has a question what that is, feel free to ask me. And then finally, they listed some of the equipment that they've purchased with the Perkins funding, and it sounds like quite a bit. It sounds like they've done a really great job with the funding that they've received. So they bought a new paint booth. They've bought equipment for welding, plumbing, heating. They purchased a vinyl printer cutter for graphic design, an alignment machine, equipment for kitchen. And they're looking to purchase hospital beds, a police cruiser, firefighting equipment and auto tech equipment. So they, they're really doing a lot over there. Any questions in regards to that? All right. So there are no committee reports tonight, so we'll move right on to old business. And I will attend, I will entertain a motion to approve the following policies for second reading. ADC, smoking tobacco use. BDD, board superintendent relationship. GBEBB, staff conduct with students. IKF, graduation requirements. And JECBA, admission of foreign students.
So moved.
I have one quick question. I have one question.
Okay.
Um, the, I just, I was just out of curiosity, on the graduation requirements, the kids that have, like cognitive disabilities, do they, what happens during graduation? Do they still get, I just wanted, didn't see that written in there. Like, do they certificate for completion, or what happens when they graduate?
Jim, you're muted.
Thank you, Jenna. Actually, we need a second before we can have a discussion.
Oh, okay.
I think, Ms. Hooper, seconded.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I did. We haven't had a move in a second, so we can open it up for discussion.
Yep, so, um, I don't know if Sue, Sue on, yep, Susan here, if she wants to chime in to answer your question. But we don't do, presently, we don't do a certificate of attendance.
Well, no, the kids that, you know, are MR, whatever, are just, they're never going to graduate. But they do the four years. Do they, when they march with their class and they get
Yes.
the diploma cover, what do they, do they get something inside it that says something? You know?
Yeah, that's a great question. Go ahead, Mark.
So at the high school, those students are put in programs so that they are meeting all of the graduation requirements outlined for every member of the class. So those students will receive a winter high school diploma.
Even the kids that are severe and profound?
Yep, because they're, they're, they're IEP developed a plan so that they are growing academically in all of the areas as are their peers. I mean, may not be at the same level as their peers, obviously, but they are growing and demonstrating that they are, you know, achieving. It's amazing to watch these students. I mean, you know, some of these students will have a little electronic device and, you know, aren't able to communicate on their own, but they're able to use those devices to tell us that they're headed to, for example, the cafeteria. So, yeah, they, they burned their diploma and they will receive a winter high school diploma.
Who did you want to add something?
No, that's exactly what I was going to say, is that their IEP, their individual education program is, is designed so that they have a track to meet. And we outline that beginning in ninth grade. And whether a student takes a four-year track or a five-year track to get to graduation, each student is unique, and, and we meet them where they are, and we get them to where they want to go.
Just wanted to make sure they, they got, you know, had something when they marched.
Oh, I can speak from experience. My son was a member of that program too, and at that time, there was always discussion. But he marched with his class, even though he didn't graduate officially till the next year. And it was quite an exciting time for all the kids. It was a good program.
So, um, we can certainly entertain any more questions on any of these policies. But I just wanted to get a sense from all of you that this is what I was trying to explain. I double-struck and, and double-underlined, double-struck things that we're looking to delete and double-underline language that we were going to add. And, but it isn't ever that perfect, because in some of these situations that we had entirely new policies that were added, and so I had sent you guys a memo, which, calling included in your package in addition to the email I sent you, explaining kind of what the changes were in each of the policies. I guess I just, we can talk about specific ones if you want to. Certainly, I want to give you the opportunity to do that, but I, just the process of providing that kind of detail to you in the way that I did, is that something that the committee is good with, or do you have suggestions to do something more different? It's the way I've kind of done it, and I just need to make sure it's working for you guys.
I liked it.
It's fine with me.
I like that you did it in a memo in writing, and then also on the actual policy both ways. I like that a lot.
Okay. That's the way, that's the way we'll proceed. So now proceed with questions.
Well, let's start in order. Does anybody have any discussion that they'd like to make in regards to the tobacco ADC policy?
No.
No? Okay. How about GB, I'm sorry, BDD, school committee superintendent relationship?
No, no changes.
Right. How about GBEBB, staff conduct with students?
Again, no changes, just, it was a new draft, but substantively no difference.
How about IKF, graduation requirements? That's one that we had quite a bit of discussion about last time.
That's the one with the juniors being seniors and what they qualify for?
Yeah.
And that really is the only change, so, yes.
That looks like, oh, go ahead.
I was just going to say, is this sort of common amongst other high schools as well?
I don't know. I don't know that it is. I looked for other language, and we talked, I talked to Charlotte, and she, and actually, I think Mark, Mark, you're, you're unmuted. You talked to some other schools or people about this policy, the language that you and I discussed?
I have not talked to any other schools. I only would have reference to the schools that I've been a part of in the past.
Okay, but I think for the most part, there was, Charlotte basically said, it really is a local decision. And, and I know Joel had some concerns. We, I followed up with him to make sure that kids are not being penalized, so we added that additional language about graduating juniors are considered graduates, and they're eligible to apply for all applicable scholarships. And Sue, you'd asked me a question today about, you know, we're already in this year. We're not going to make it each, you know, we happen to have a graduating junior this year who could have displaced the top 10 or even a top two. And so what we had said is, is going to happen is we would do a, essentially a second valedictorian or recognize the person. I think Joe had actually suggested that, and would not displace somebody in the, in the class of 2021. At the same time, not diminish the achievements or accomplishments of this student who's graduating this year, so we want to kind of do both.
Excellent, thank you for that. Any other questions or discussion in regards to IKF?
No.
No? Okay. And so policy, JECBA, admission of foreign exchange students?
Again, there were no changes. I was, had been asked to check on the form that was, that was in there, because this was an, an old policy. 18 years old. And that was, that is still the, that is still the form that those students have to complete, so no changes to that one.
Okay, there's more. If there's no other discussion, I can call a vote. Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
Mr. Petrowski?
Yes, except that this is just to approve the second reading, right?
Correct.
The reading will be at the next meeting.
No, there is no third read. Second reading is the final reading. First and second readings.
Oh, okay, yes.
Okay, Mrs. Hooper?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
I'm also a yes, so the vote passes unanimously. There is no new business this meeting. Any public comments? I don't see any so far in the chat. All right, we'll move on to school committee comments. Ms. Dykett?
Just wanted to say that I had contacted NH, no, that might not be the right initials, whatever the broadcasting company is for our gym. And then I also talked to, emailed Joel and Mark and Jim, because obviously we weren't able to stream the games, but the issue seems to be fixed. They didn't seem to have any issues on their end. And Joel said they had replaced a wire or something, so hopefully games will run a little bit more smoothly and we'll be able to watch them, but I just really appreciate everyone who has either stepped in to record. I know the Perkins have been there. And Joel has scurried around in the Munzy Media Station as well, which has no affiliation with Winter or anything, but they also livestream, and it's just, it's very appreciative that other schools are stepping up and offering these services as well, since we can't get in those gyms, so I just really appreciate it. And good luck to all the teams this season. Fingers crossed for them being able to play. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Petrowski?
Well, picking up on that, we also have some streaming going on of our hockey players, both the boys' team and the girls' team. And I'll have to get some more of the documentation, and I'll get it back to the school committee so that we can post it, and I can send one up to Mark and everything. He may have it. But that's great to see that they've moved ahead in that regard as well. But I think all of this streaming, you know, helps the student athlete as well as it helps the parents and the grandparents and everybody else who may be interested in what's going on. Because I'm just amazed that the papers don't really have any scores in the next day. I don't know what's going on, but I think we could do a better job than what the papers do.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Hooper?
I just wanted to thank you for allowing me the time to think about if I had the amount of time to dedicate to the negotiations committee. So thank you for allowing me that time. I really appreciate it.
Well, and thank you for volunteering to do it.
Absolutely.
Mr. West?
Yeah, I just have one thing, kind of doubling on what I brought up last time about the Roger Garrett Trail. Um, now that we know it's school property, a couple of things, I don't know what we can do. One, they're going to be grooming the trails for the kids to ski. If we could somehow figure out how to post or do something for the walkers and the grooming for the kids, and also find a way to keep the four-wheelers and the cars off the trail. I know that's damaging the trail. I'm not sure how you would, how to police it, I'm not sure, but I know that's a beautiful trail, and it's starting to cause some damage. So I'm not, something to
Okay.
think about what we can do. I don't know. And again, try to, try to do that with the kids starting skiing if it ever snows. The, we're going to groom those trails, and then we got to keep it open for the community, but I don't know, maybe a sign or something, half-walking, I don't know. But also a way to block, especially, I've seen a couple of cars over there, and they just don't need to be down there. Not now, but in the spring and stuff. I don't know, just signs would do it, or a couple of chain, I don't know.
All right, I'm writing furiously. Hang on just one second. Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Deandewaley?
I just have a quick report on our school's effort into getting more kids to be, participate in our lunch program. Am I allowed to show my screen? Superintendent Hodgkin?
Yeah. Yeah, you should be all set to do that.
Yeah, I just have a, I have a quick video of what we've been kind of right here. Yeah, so I just.
Mr. Delisle, what does he need to do?
I think you, you or somebody who's co-host needs to make him a co-host.
He's good. You're all good.
Yeah.
All righty, this is, so this is a quick video that was up on our social medias for promoting the school lunch, and then at the end, we did another one, and then I'll just talk briefly about it.
Welcome back, Ramblers, and welcome to our mukbang of WHS Lunch. I'm here with Kerrigan. And we're going to be showing you a few of the lunch options that WHS has to offer. Let's get right into it.
Hi, everybody. So today I have the special, which is chicken and waffles. It comes with a roll, some french fries, some maple leaf flavored chicken. I got a side salad. You could also get a fruit salad dressing, some ketchup, and you can get a drink if you want to.
All righty, well, special's always great, but you can always go for a classic. Here I have a chicken burger, which has been my favorite since, I think, my freshman year. I also got a side salad, some honey mustard. You have to get this if you get a chicken burger. I was about to tell you guys. And you can also get a milk. All right, mine was a 10 out of 10. I don't know about you, Kerrigan.
Oh, well, I think mine was a 10 out of 10.
Really?
Yeah.
It's almost like everybody should get school lunch. Boomerang!
It's school lunch.
All righty, and the next one is, we got a few of our sophomores with a pop culture reference in our generation right now, and they're doing a little dance move called the dice roll. And they're basically dice-rolling their way to the lunchroom to get some free lunch. They're all very cooperative. They're really fun. Picture Jacob Barrows from left to right, Jacob Barrows, Andrew Fay, Brandon Stubber, and Matt Beck. And we tried, and we made sure that everyone could be filmed and have their consent to post it on the social media webs and stuff. And we were trying to be considerate of distancing and whatnot as well. I'll stop sharing. Overall, it's kind of just a fun experience, and we've been, we've, I don't know, that I've seen, I think personally, I've seen some kids go up and definitely like students come definitely like students come up to me and say, like, as much as I kind of want to pack a lunch today, I kind of decided to get a lunch from school because it is free. And so appreciating the opportunity. So that was really nice to hear.
Great job, Josh.
Thank you for doing that, Josh, and thank Kerrigan as well, please. Ms. Group?
I just want to share that the student leadership team has been in in the putting together, I reckon, like we do with student of them. So hopefully we will get that running at the next town. Yeah, we can show our appreciation for those teachers.
Emily, could you repeat that? You kind of froze and I missed, I think, the best part of what you were saying.
The student leadership, oh, can you hear me now?
I can't. Thank you.
The student leadership team has been putting together a teacher recognition and we kind of similar to how we do it for student of the month. And we are hoping to present those at the town meetings that we had. Well, we're hoping to do one teacher per quarter and we have town meetings once a month, so we will present those then and we can show our appreciation for those teachers.
Well, that's fabulous. And hopefully you'll share with us.
Yes, we will.
Awesome. That's great. Thank you so much. So for myself, I did forget. I wanted to say good luck to Ms. Wing and Ms. Lyons and thank Ms. Devens for her service and we wish you all the best. I should have said that under the superintendent report, so I just wanted to make sure I said that now. Also, oh, I wanted to share, Mr. Campbell sent me a chat saying that CATS sent us a video to share with students grades 10 and 11 to promote their program. So that's really great to hear. And then also I look forward to seeing everybody in person next at the next meeting on February 3rd at the PAC.
And next week, next week as well.
Yes, and next for us, yes.
Yep.
Yes. And that is all I had. There's no executive session tonight, so without objection, I can declare this meeting adjourned. Any exceptions?
No.
No? All right. Well, I'm going to declare this meeting adjourned at 6:31 PM.